Okay. Yeah, I think we're beginning. Good evening. We're here for the, for the public meeting of the Danvers Planning Board. This evening is Wednesday, November 12th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We're here at Danvers Town Hall. My name's Lou George. I'm the Chair of the, of the Planning Board and I'm joined here by Jean Hartnett, our clerk and member, Michael Decoulis. And we're also joined by Josh Morris from the, from the town of Danvers. And so, so at today's meeting, we do, Jim Sears will not be present at today's meeting. So, so why don't we, and also I did want to make a note just at the outset of our meeting that, that one of our, one of our members, Tim Spittle, Tim Spittle did advise us by, advised the Planning Board as well as advised the Town Manager that he is, that he, that he, that effective, immediately he's leaving the, the Planning Board, that he is going to be moving out of town. And so, he sent a, he sent us a note, which I think was shared with members of the, of the Board and it was a, and just wanted to say at the outset of our meeting, just really to thank Tim for, for his service to the, to the Board and to the town of Danvers and, and wish him all the best. It was really, it was good working with him and again, wish him, wish him all the best in, in, in the future. So, so excellent. Well, why don't we begin now with our, with our public hearing here? The first item on the agenda is 200 Endicott Street, request for site plan review submitted by Raising Cane's Restaurants, LLC for property at 200 Endicott Street, map 62, lot 5 pursuant to section 4, site plan review of the zoning bylaw. Said property is in the commercial 3, C3 zoning district. The applicant proposes a standalone restaurant with a drive-through and associated site modifications. And Josh, I think we have a note here that, and I did see in our, our packet, that the applicant requested a continuance to the December 9th, 2025 Planning Board meeting.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And I believe that he, that in the, in the materials, I think they indicated just in the request for the continuance, and I just want to just make a note here. So it was a letter from the, from the applicant through their counsel that they request a, request the site plan review hearing scheduled for November 12th, 2025 be continued to the Planning Board's meeting of December 9th, 2025 to allow time for the completion of the requested traffic peer review and engineering department responses. So, so that's their, their request. Anything further, Josh, on that?
I think that summarizes it pretty well.
Okay. So, so I would like to entertain a motion to, to continue this item to the December 9th, 2025 meeting?
I make a motion, we continue 200 Endicott Street to the December 9th, 2025 meeting.
Okay. First by Jean Hartnett. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Michael Decoulis. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, very good. So it's been moved now to our next, to our next, well, actually not to the next meeting, rather, to the December 9th, 2025 meeting. Okay, so our next agenda item then is 19 Valley Road. It's a request by Patrick D. Connors, Mary Connors Behringer, and Robert D. Connors for endorsement of an approval not required A&R Plan for 19 Valley Road assessors map 6, lot 8, to divide the existing lot into three parcels, two non-buildable lots. The property is in the residential 3, R3 zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Connor Walsh from Globski &amp; Globski, 8 Washington Street in Beverly, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. You know, you stated everything that I would have said here. This is really just an A&R Plan to divide, divide this property up to include two separate and non-buildable lots from the improved lot.
Okay. Very good. Okay, any, you know, any questions from the Board? And as you know, we're, we're one member down, down today. But any questions from the Board? Why don't we start with, with Jean?
So, since they're non-buildable, is the plan to sell to the abutters?
It's really, so this was family property and this is to retain flexibility for future planning. They don't have any plans as to anything to do with either of these lots. But it's part of, you know, their general kind of estate planning and future planning. But there's no plan, to answer your question, there's no plan to sell to the abutters in the interim.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Mike?
No, I'm good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor, just a couple of questions, just in terms of the, and maybe just to also explain to sort of the, as well in terms of the, maybe any viewers watching as well in terms of A&R. So in terms of, how does the fact that you have that, that two of the parcels are non-buildable, how does that affect sort of the A&R process?
It doesn't. I mean, the, by noting it as not being a buildable lot, then, you know, A&R certainly stands approval not required. If this were to be an attempt to establish parcels A and B as buildable lots, it'd be a much different story, of course. But here, you know, by retaining the improved lot as conforming with the requirements in, in the R3 zoning district, then it, it allows through A&R to divide it in such a manner, so long as it's properly noted that the smaller parcels that don't conform with the requirements of the zoning bylaw are non-buildable.
Okay. So, so in essence, that, that sort of labeling that they're non-buildable, that's going to go and, and be, and sort of, you know, sort of retain with the property in terms of registry of deeds?
Yes. So if, if, if these parcels were to be conveyed out, you know, this A&R Plan would be what goes to record at the registry of deeds. The reference would be to parcel B, it would be clear to anybody ever reviewing the title to the property that, you know, neither of those parcels are in fact buildable lots.
I mean, can that be, can that change at some point? Can you go to, can that, can that change from non-buildable to buildable?
Not without zoning relief.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But, I mean, realistically, in my experience, that level of zoning relief for buildable lots is typically something that's not particularly well-received by zoning boards. And so I suppose there is always the possibility that somebody could pursue that, but at this stage, there's no plan for anything like that.
Understood. Okay. But again, you say you'd be, it would be in a different scenario if the, if, if, if as we see on the plan here, they were not, they were labeled, you know, it wasn't labeled as a non-buildable lot?
Correct.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Very good.
I actually have one question. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Josh, this may be a question for you, but are the adjacent lots buildable currently? Like, so the purple one in the plan that I'm looking at, parcel B to the left is a, is, I think it says M-A-R-J-O-N irrevocable trust?
Right.
Is that a, currently a buildable lot?
I believe that's an improved lot already. So I think that that is my expectation, given the fact that it's held in an irrevocable trust and just knowing Valley Road. I don't know off the top of my head, but my suspicion would be that that is probably, houses a single-family home.
Josh, you have any thoughts on that, too?
Yeah, I mean, I could, I don't know how applicable or, or kind of, I don't know how much we want to go down this road, but, but potentially, but.
Before your answer, I guess my question was just that, is it, do we have another unbuildable lot and then this lot can be combined with that lot to then become a buildable lot? Or is that not logistically how this could work?
Single-family home.
Yeah, probably.
And then on the other side, I think that's basically where like the parking lot is, right?
Or close to. So, on like the, the area that you're talking about, I mean, that's probably, if there's not a house on it now, I mean, there's always, right, so in R3, if you have 30,000 square foot and you have 125 feet of frontage, you could build a house. So if there's not a house there right now, but we could, it looks like Jean commented that there probably is, or there is one now. You know, there's, there's potential that you could, you could, if you have 30,000 square feet and you have 120, 125 feet of frontage, that is within the realm of possibility without relief. And then I guess you could, you know, apply that same
Yeah.
scenario to the other side at 31 Valley Road.
There's no house, house on that side.
Yeah.
So.
And I suppose one item of clarity there is, given the frontage for that 15 Valley Road of 785 feet and the 150 feet of depth, unless it, I mean, I don't think that there is a scenario where that lot, if it were currently vacant, would be non-buildable.
Right.
And so, but I, my, I don't have it in front of me, but my under, my memory is that there's a number of single families along that side of the street and I suspect that that's one of them.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Any further questions?
No, thanks, Lou. Appreciate it.
Okay. Jean, any?
Nope.
And Josh from the town, anything further on?
No, no further comment.
On that? Okay. This is not a, this is not a public hearing, but we do have a member of the, the public here. Is, does any members of the public have any questions which I can entertain? Yes, Mr. Bradstreet, why don't you?
Bill Bradstreet telling me you might have a precinct warrant. If, if it's listed as non-buildable, that doesn't necessarily, it's in perpetuity is the word. It can at some point change if it's added to or something has changed. So it's not, that's it, it's cut in stone and it's, will never change. Anything is subject, quote unquote, anything is subject to change.
Okay. Let me go in, that question, let me ask the, the applicant. I think the applicant touched upon that a little bit before.
I, I think he did, but I just want to ask him, that's all.
Okay. If the applicant can, can answer Mr. Bradstreet's question?
I suppose.
I think you mentioned about, there would be a matter in terms of relief would be necessary or that, but if you can.
Yeah, I mean, there are any number of scenarios that exist that could, I mean, the bylaw could change in a manner that the dimensional requirements are different. That possibility exists that at that point, it may be considered a buildable lot. The other route, under the current bylaw, if anybody were to try to render that particular lot as buildable, it would be, it would require significant zoning relief in the form of variances from the zoning board of appeals, both for lot area and frontage, which is a, in my experience, an uphill, an uphill climb. And so, so again, I mean, there's no crystal ball as to what the town looks like in the next 20 years, but at this stage, there's nothing. Who knows if I will be, you know? So I hope that, I hope that answers your question.
Mr. Bradstreet, anything?
I think I've said enough. I just, I can just see, as I said, that nothing is cut and dried or in stone, that anything can change down the line. As far as the zoning rules, like everything else, it can change. There are, has been mentioned to me there getting to be less and less buildable land in town, which would, to me, would say that at some point, someone's going to figure out a way to make however they do it, or find some land that can be used as buildable. Someone will develop, development is a way of making a profit. I can just, there are enough minds out there figuring how to make money. And I just look at this, I'm not going to be here to worry about it, but somebody down the line might be very concerned that things can change and not in a good way necessarily. I know we need housing and all that, but we can only go so far. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Josh, was there anything further on that at all?
Um, I think that's probably it, I guess.
Okay. Anything, and now in terms of the, what's needed from us then would be a, would then be a motion with respect to that?
Correct. Yeah, just a motion to, well, yeah, to move forward with this. A motion to approve the A&R Plan as, as presented.
Okay, very good. If I entertain a motion, any further questions or comments by members of the Board? Okay. Very good then. I'd like to entertain a motion on, on 19 Valley Road?
I make a motion, we approve the A&R for 19 Valley Road.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jean, seconded by, by Mike. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Good. Good luck. Very, thank you. So, okay, so. All right, so Josh, let's, so I, I think our next agenda item here are the, are the meeting minutes. And so these are the minutes from our, these are minutes from the October 28th, 2025 meeting. I noticed we have a little different, different format for the meeting, for the minutes, rather. So I hope you all take a moment to review them and if there are any, any edits or revisions to the, to the meeting minutes. I think I see, let's see. And this is just not, this is not so much, just because it's referenced in the minutes, I did want to make a note here, Josh, that one of the items that was on the, that's on the minutes from our last meeting was the, was the 83 Elm Street and 5 Essex Street property. And I do, and I, and we, we noted here that we did, that we asked staff to provide a stat, to request a status update from the applicant, you know, prior to the January meeting and to communicate the Board's concerns about delay. And so, we did have, I don't know if, just for the, for the record, if you can, you know, give an update on that. I think that you did, that you did, you did obtain an update from the applicant?
Yes. One moment, I could give a, I could paraphrase it.
Sure, that'd be great, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And I, I know you shared it with the members of the Board, but just for the, for the record, it'd be good if we could.
Sure.
Because we did ask, we did raise a question about it at our last meeting. Since it's in the minutes, I thought I would just do a little detour and we could
Sure.
cover that.
Yep. So, the development team and through their counsel, I reached out to them and asked if they could give a brief, or just if they could give an explanation for the request from the October meeting to the January meeting and that was our.
And I think the question was, is in terms of, because of the, of, you know, sort of the, the question I think concerned, just the, it was voted on, it was, you know, the, the continuance was approved, but just the extended, you know, the period from October through January.
Right. The, the length of the continuance, yep. So the, the development team was saying that they're reviewing, because during the discussion from the summer, when the project was approved, from the conversation of, you know, reducing the number of units in the building from 16 to 13, they're sort of looking at the architecture plans, the building size, and how potentially modifying the building would potentially modify the, the site plan related to the building. And that was, that's sort of the main kind of reason that was given for the request and the length of time. So.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Okay. Great. So this, turning back to the minutes, any, any edits or changes to the minutes at all? Good? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion then to, to approve the minutes from the October 28th, 2025 meeting?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from October 28th, 2025.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Jean, seconded by Mike, to approve the minutes from the October 28th, 2025 meeting. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, so our minutes have been, been approved. So that's the end of the, the agenda for our meeting. Josh, can we give us a, sort of an update on what's coming up, what's coming up next?
Yeah, a couple of things. So just in terms of our meeting schedule, the meeting schedule for, on that Tuesday, November 25th, we had a scheduled meeting. There are no applications in front of the Board and in discussion with the Chair. Since there were no applications, it's a week of Thanksgiving. We thought it would be, we thought it'd be okay to cancel that meeting just in terms of people's time and the vacation, the holiday period. So we won't be meeting that night.
So there are no applications that are pending? That would be before the, before the, for the, for what would be the November 25th meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And so our next meeting, regularly scheduled meeting, would be on Tuesday, December 9th. And that would be, that evening would be, as we speak right now, the 200 Endicott Street site plan review application, application that we continued several minutes ago. I guess.
That's the Raising Cane's?
The Raising, the proposed Raising Cane's at 200 Endicott Street. I guess I would ask the members of the Board if they will be participating that night, if there are any issues in terms of your schedules. Just wanted to, just while we're here, to talk about that.
I should be.
Okay, very good.
We have a little smaller group now.
Yep. Right. And then.
Yeah, December 9th is fine with me. Mike, are you going to be in person as well?
Yep.
Okay.
As far as I know.
Great. Yeah, I think we should all be then here and in person.
Very good. And Jim will likely be here.
Okay, great.
So that's great. And then just in terms of other non-scheduling items, just like planning-related items, let me see here.
Yeah, a couple of things we had talked about at the last meeting. I think housing production plan discussion, as well as a
Yeah.
discussion about sort of, sort of a follow-up to some of the planning initiatives that we had, that there was a presentation about a few months back.
So housing production plan, it's looking like that probably will be likely, probably at a January meeting now as we speak, just because the way that, you know, I didn't know that we were going to continue this from tonight and I thought maybe December 9th, we could do that potentially, but it's okay. It's all just moving pieces. And we are just looking to kind of nail down a, a time or date that the consultant who put it together, or helped us put it together, is available. So that's likely a January item, January meeting type of item.
Do we have a date for that?
We, our first, I don't, there's a meeting on January 13th and then a meeting on two weeks from that, on January 27th. So I'm not, I haven't nailed that down yet. And I'm working with Aaron, the Land use director, just because he was really involved with it, just kind of nailing down that date and time.
And the idea would be have a discussion with the, with the consultant, with questions that we can, that, that we can ask, as well as members of the public can ask about the housing production plan and then we would then have a vote on the plan at then, at, at a following meeting, following that?
Correct. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's just for us as a group and the public to kind of have a public discourse about the, you know, the draft that we're trying to finalize. But it's definitely an opportunity for the public and the Board to talk through that, questions, comments. Ultimately, the Board will have to officially vote on it, but from staff's perspective, doesn't have to happen. We're not expecting it to be that same night that we kind of, it, it has been quite some times that we've talked about it, so.
Yeah, since it's been a while since we talked about it, I would prefer that we have a discussion, we're able to ask questions and then be able to digest it before actually having a vote on the matter.
That's how staff views it as well. So.
Okay.
Good for both of you.
Okay.
What other, what other just item discussed on the Board? I know in late October, we received, a couple of weeks ago, we hadn't been talking about doing a visioning and a planning initiative, planning public conversation about the Liberty Tree Mall on Endicott Street. We had applied with the State's Executive Office of Economic Development for a $75,000 grant to help us, you know, the plan was to do it, to have a big public kind of conversation about the future of the mall in Endicott Street. Unfortunately, we did not receive that grant, but we are still obviously very interested in that topic and that item. It is a, certainly an, a strong focus of our office in that item. So we are, as we speak, still look, we are looking at additional or new funding sources for that item, but that just, the timeline on that seems like it might be pushed back a little bit more than what we would ideally, what we were hoping. But that's okay. We'll keep it, keep it going.
I know we covered some other things as well when we had our, so, so I would, I would want to, you know, see also about having an update.
Yep.
A more formal update on where things stand with, in terms of other initiatives we talked about as well. I think we talked about even, you know, like potentially a master plan, that sort of thing.
So in January, one of the meetings in January, and we're still talking about internally which one, we were hoping to give a little bit more, a little, a more of a formal update on several of these items, particularly some of like the, like the lighting, zoning amendment stuff. The issue is that we're, we're trying to figure out when the next town meeting that we could bring zoning amendments to and sort of when that's been kind of finalized with the Town Manager's Office, when we could bring a zoning amendment to town meeting and which town meeting that would be. And then we would just kind of backtrack.
Because historically, the zoning, zoning matters have been brought up either at like the, the fall or it's maybe been the, also it's been the, the winter town meeting as opposed to during the annual town meeting in May.
Historically, planning and zoning, this is what I've, I guess I'm just the messenger or whatever, zoning and planning stuff generally, or, you know, when they're kind of significant, a number of numerous planning and zoning amendment articles, they are generally not at annual town meeting in May. So if that's the case, or is going to be the case going forward, we just have to kind of figure it out when, but we just have to, in consultation and, you know, collaborate with the, you know, the Town Manager's Office, when, when that would be. So we're hoping by January that we would have a good indication, you know, like, if we are going to have a special in, or could we, you know, hopefully by January, we'll have a little more clarity on whether, if we had a smaller item or two, could we throw it on the annual, or could we do a special in the fall of 2026? Or could we do a larger special, you know, and this is me just talking, potentially a larger special in like February of 2027?
Okay.
And then we would just like backtrack, you know?
Right, working backwards.
Working backwards from, all right, so we know that we're definitely doing, we definitely have zoning articles on this town meeting. We're going to open the public hearing for lighting, you know, in, you know, three or four months, you know, to that date and, you know, the whole process. We're hoping that in January, we should have a better kind of feel for where we stand on some of those bigger items, so.
Well, I would like to have a, have a, you know, have staff providing a, a report, you know, perhaps in, at, at one of the meetings in January.
Yeah, for sure.
Even if at that point, even if we don't know sort of where things stand, just so at least we have it as an agenda item, so people can know, okay, you know, obviously gave the, you know, gave the update now about in terms of the Endicott Street corridor, that that is, you know, that the grant for that didn't, you know, didn't get the, the grant for it, but at least, but, you know, so at least we have it as an agenda item, so then people can be,
Yeah.
you know, can be able to, you know, to, to, you know. You know, can be able to, you know, to, to, you know, be advised of it and be able to sort of know where things stand, even if we, even if we're, things are sort of still potentially up in the air.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yep. Happy to do that.
Great. Okay. Anything, so in terms of our, so anticipated our meeting on Feb, on, on 25 November is going to be, is, is going to be canceled, but with respect to 9 December, we have, so we have, we have the, you know, 200 Endicott Street. Any other ones that we have anticipated right now?
No.
Okay.
And then the first meeting in January, January 13th would be that, the 83 Elm Street site plan application. So, so that's, as we speak right now, those are the applications and the dates as we speak, that they will be discussed.
Okay. That sounds, sounds good. Any questions from, from the board? I do see a hand raised by Mr. Bradstreet. Do you have a question about, if you want to go up to the podium, just so people can, can, can hear you and see you?
Again, Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. 200 Endicott Street, will they bring, be bringing a selection of their menu items for observation, or a ruling whether they pass or don't?